Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole to order, please. It is at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, February 23rd. And I think in future meetings, if we're going to have such lovely weather, maybe we should go for a hike with the Forest Resort, and we can have technology keep track of all of our conversations. It's somehow too lovely to be stuck inside, especially with the, hopefully, the onset of spring and warmer weather. May I please have the roll call?
Allen. Bates.
Present. Bates present.
Thank you. Berman.
Berman here.
Brown.
Here.
Davist.
Davist here.
Ford.
Here.
Fraz.
Here.
Igbal.
Igbal present.
Gums.
Gums is here.
Kenyon.
Kenyon here.
Kope.
Kope's here.
Leonard.
Leonard here.
Martin.
Martin here.
Molina.
Molina present.
Sanchez.
Here.
Shepro.
Here.
Silva.
Silva here.
Strathman.
Here.
Sergez.
Sergez here, and I did see Kiyos online. I don't know why he didn't answer, but I did see him on camera deal.
Thank you. Tepe.
Tepe here.
Weber.
Present.
Oniki.
Oniki present.
Allen, present, please.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you all for coming. May we please have the Pledge of Allegiance? Nancy, do you want to introduce yourself?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Nancy McGary, Human Resource Coordinator. And everybody put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nancy. Nancy always greets me in the morning with a big smile.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
She's a great asset to the county. May we please have the approval of the January 26, 2021 minutes?
Gums will move.
I would move approval.
Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing no changes, may I please have a voice vote?
Allen.
Allen, aye.
Bates.
Bates, aye.
Berman.
Berman, yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Davist.
Davist, yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fraz.
Yes.
Igbal.
Igbal, yes.
Gums.
Gums, yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Kiyos.
Kiyos, yes.
Kope.
Kope, yes.
Leonard.
Leonard, yes.
Martin.
Martin, yes.
Molina.
Molina, yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Shepro, yes.
Silva.
Silva, yes.
Strathman.
Yes.
Sergez.
Sergez, yes.
Tepe.
Tepe, yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Oniki.
Oniki, yes.
Thank you.
The minutes pass. Thank you. Do we have any public comments? Anyone in the audience? None? Is there anyone online? No public comments? All righty. So now we can, hearing no public comments and seeing no public comments online, we can now go to our, the purpose of the meeting is to do the presentations. Mr. Weber, I'd like to turn this over to you now, and if you can share with us the information that you have received from Wabanci Community College about the adult-use cannabis industry and potential careers and programs here for Kane County.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So last Friday, at the Jobs Committee, we had a presentation from Wabanci Community College in regards to a pilot program that they are applying to get, and hopefully, hoping to get from the state of Illinois in regards to careers as they are connected to the cannabis industry. And they gave us a presentation, and this is the presentation that they had sent us. So I'll go through, I'm not going to touch on every single thing, but I'll go through the presentation as it was presented to us. Blair, can you go to the next slide? So some of the United States stuff, I'm not going to dig into. I'll stick with Illinois. For last year for Illinois, there was $1 billion in retail sales done in cannabis. $670 million of those sales were, well, those are the actual retail sales. The $1 billion is the retail sales with taxes added on to it. So call it 200, whatever, $30 million in taxes that were generated for the state from this program. So the growth has been tremendous. Next slide, please. As you can see, prior to January 1st, 2020, there were 5,800 cannabis-related jobs for medicinal cannabis use in Illinois. 8,348 were added just in 2020. So huge job creation, tons of potential. And Wabanci Valley really wants to win this pilot program so they can educate people to get into this space. Next slide, please. These are cannabis terms. We don't need to worry about those. But this slide is interesting because it shows you the pace of the growth of cannabis. So it's currently legal in 35 states with 15 allowing legal adult recreational use. And I believe yesterday, New Jersey became the 16th state to allow it. So there's lots of states that are obviously looking at this. There's referendums in multiple states, looking to continue to move this program along. Next slide, please. Does anybody need to go through any of these terms? I think cannabis is the flower in which marijuana comes from. But there's also hemp is a cannabis plant, too. But one provides the THC, which is the cerebral, the mental high that people get. And then CBD comes from hemp, which is part of the cannabinoid system, which we all have internally. I can get really technical with this stuff, but I don't think it's necessary for today's meeting. Next slide, please. You can continue. Next slide. So in regards to Wabanci Valley, there's so many different avenues to go into in regards to cannabis. You have the breeders, the cultivators, the manufacturers, extractors, dispensaries, transportation. Those are all separate industries within the industry, and they're all very specific in what they do. And Wabanci Valley, what they want to do for their pilot program is they want to concentrate a lot of their training on the lab portion, but they also want to teach for retail setting as well, whether it's compliance, education, things of that nature. Next slide, please. So these are all ancillary that come off of the industry. Lawyers obviously are involved heavily, accountants heavily involved, marketing, packaging. I mean, these are all industries that are growing as the industry grows, and it's not going anywhere. Next slide, please. This is a very telling slide, and it's important for everyone to see this, to show the opportunities that are out there for people that might be displaced from a previous job, which might be a retail setting. Obviously, we know retail as a whole is suffering right now. So there's people in place currently at big-box retailers that need somewhere else to go. You have people maybe currently in community college that are looking for other avenues to go. You have, manufacturing is a big thing for Kane County, as is agricultural. And you can see that these jobs, these numbers are 100% accurate. So many opportunities. Next slide, please. This was a slide that they posted that showed the offerings of jobs right now. This was as of Friday that were available in Kane County. And keep in mind, there's only currently two open stores in Kane County, and there's more that are on the horizon. But just from those very few operations, there's 39 postings of jobs that are open on Indeed. Next slide, please. So this touches on the pilot program that Wabanci is hoping to get. So they applied for the pilot program with the state of Illinois. This goes to the program considering non-credit courses and certificates for dispensary careers, as well as offered non-credit courses for cannabis in the workplace. Next slide. This is just more information in regards to it. The licenses will be awarded by the state of Illinois to eight community colleges based on merit as determined by the Illinois Department of Agricultural. So ECC originally was going to apply as well, but Wabanci and ECC communicated and felt like it'd be best if they just put their effort into one. And so Wabanci, a community college, decided that it would be best for them because they have a lab program that ECC does not have. So they felt like they had the best chance of winning the county if they went that route with Wabanci Community College. Next slide, please. So here's some of the considerations in order for them to win. Geographical diversity, curriculum plan, faculty subject expertise in cannabis and cannabis-related fields. Five of the licenses will be awarded to institutions with over 50% low-income student population. Security measures put in place to ensure that the cannabis plants and products do not land in the wrong hands. Placement plan for students who successfully go through the program. That's a really nice bullet point because obviously, at the end of the day, we want people to go into the program but have somewhere to go once they get out of the program. Next slide, please. Core competencies. I mean, regulations, governance, compliance, huge in the industry. Cannabis plant science. I mean, when you talk about a marriage between agricultural farming and then high-level laboratory stuff, this industry has all of it. Marketing, just like any other business, there's marketing, there's advertising, law. It's so diverse. It's way more advanced than most people would realize. Next slide, please. These are the certificates that they hope to offer. It shows the curriculum, the course, introduction to cannabis, regulation, governance, compliance, pharmacology, patient care specialists, dispensary operations and management. Next slide. And this is for the lab portion. Introduction to cannabis, laboratory technology, fundamentals of laboratory technology, laboratory instruments. Laboratory instruments, too. Next slide, please. So these are the steps that, hopefully, should they win the pilot program, this is what they want to be able to do. Next slide. So the program was very, what they want to do is big, it's vast. Obviously, there's lots of community colleges in Illinois. I think it's unique that a college in Kane County has the opportunity to win this pilot program. I think it's good for the county as far as opportunities for people that live in our county, as well as the growth of the industry. I can answer any questions if anyone has any. I have a decent amount of knowledge in this space. I've done a lot of research and reading. So if anybody has any questions, I will answer them. But before, I want to offer up one more thing, just anecdotally, but I want to just go through a list within Kane County of cities and where their stance is right now. Algonquin prohibited, Aurora allowed, Batavia undecided, but will be on a referendum. Big Rock hasn't even had a discussion about it. Burlington undecided, Campton Hills prohibited, Carpentersville allowed, East Dundee undecided, Elburn allowed, Elgin allowed, Geneva allowed, Gilberts allowed, Hampshire undecided, Huntley undecided. Kaneville hasn't talked about it. Little Lake hasn't talked about it. Maple Park hasn't talked about it. Montgomery allowed, North Aurora allowed, Pingree Grove allowed, Sleepy Hollow allowed, South Elgin allowed, St. Charles allowed, Sugar Grove prohibited, Virgil haven't talked about it, West Dundee allowed.
What about Wayne?
Didn't even come up on the radar.
And I believe that Batavia did pass it. They had it on the referendum at the last election, and I believe that it has been approved by the city council.
Did it? Okay. So add that to it.
It did pass the referendum. It was an advisory referendum, but I don't believe it did pass the city council. I think they're still discussing it. I could be wrong.
Okay. It's close.
Yes.
Bates, I have a question, please.
Yes, Ms. Bates.
So as I think about this, if Wabanci is doing a lab specialty program, and the highest-paid job was extractor, and I think that's probably a lab job, right? So maybe Wabanci is going to be preparing our students for $80,000 to $200,000 jobs.
That's correct.
That'd be awesome.
And reminder, it is a certificate program. Mr. Tepe.
Thank you. When do you think that these will be granted? And when so granted, when could the courses begin? Or what?
They don't have an exact date on when it will be awarded. They just submitted the application process. But I know that one of the things that Wabanci was hoping to have would be some support behind it, which we currently, as a county, do not really have support behind it, which obviously is something that we're going to discuss later on. But yeah.
That would have been my follow-up question.
Mr. Shepro.
Steve, what is the duration of the pilot program? And what happens at the end of the pilot program? Is there a review, or what happens next?
Well, obviously, I don't know the actual duration off the top of my head. That's a great question. But I do know, at the end, they hope to place individuals that pass the program into operations in Illinois, help them get job placement.
Is the duration of the program such that if you're admitted to the program, it will see you through to graduation? It's not like it'll end halfway through or something?
I'm sure that, just like any other program, and I don't know the answer to this, so I'm kind of spitballing here, but I would imagine that you have to, because this leads into a decent career, there's got to be steps and tests that are passed and able to achieve the next level, you know?
I guess my question really is, is there some interim process by which the program would be canceled and people might be left uncompleted, no matter what their achievement level?
That's a good question, and I don't know the answer, but I'll find it out and get an answer for the committee.
I believe that once, in my opinion, that once a university or college starts such a program, especially as a pilot program, they want to make sure that the graduates are going through that program and then do the analysis. So there would be a cohort that would be admitted, and they would see them through that cohort. That's pretty traditional.
Yeah. I mean, we just learn a lot of things that are traditional. I ain't always so.
Exactly. That become non-traditional. Yes, Ms. Oniki.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Wabanci is in Sugar Grove, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yes.
Okay. And marijuana sales is prohibited in Sugar Grove. I'm just curious if we know how the village of Sugar Grove feels about Wabanci being possibly chosen for this program.
Well, the sales of cannabis obviously are prohibited in Sugar Grove, but Wabanci Valley, because it's a part of Kane County, this is an educational program, which is different. Obviously, no sales will be coming out of the program. It's strictly educational. Now, keep in mind, there's going to be severe, I mean, strict compliance measures that take place. Once they decide who gets the program, it's not going to be, there's just going to be products just floating around a classroom and things just happen. It's going to be under strict guidelines and compliance controls. I can promise you that.
Yes.
I understood from the presentation that was made at Development that if you prohibit, you prohibit all of it, and if you permit it, you permit everything. So I wonder how Ms. Oniki's question would be addressed because that would seem to require action by Sugar Grove. I don't know that we have extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Madam Chair.
Maybe staff could answer that?
Madam Chair, Ford.
Yes, Mr. Ford.
Just remember, Wabanci has another location in Aurora with their school. So I'm pretty sure they could have alternative plans if there is an issue.
Thank you. I do believe that the lab is in the Sugar Grove location.
Yes, it is.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Van Kirkhoff.
Yeah. Unless I'm aware of Sugar Grove having annexed, the Sugar Grove campus, last I knew, that campus is entirely unincorporated.
So it is under then our jurisdiction. Thank you.
It is not policed by the Sugar Grove Police Department.
They have their own police.
I'm sorry. Could you, can you state that comment again?
I apologize. It's Gums. The campus is not policed by the Sugar Grove Police Department. They have their own police. And when they call for backup, they request it through Montgomery.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Bates, did you have a comment?
No, I was going to say the same thing.
Madam Chair, can I say, can I add some more stuff to this?
Oh, absolutely.
Just to give people a bigger snapshot of the marketplace. So currently, in Illinois, there is 86 stores that are currently open. By March 31st of this year, there will be approximately 105 dispensaries that are open. There is 21 cultivation centers in the state of Illinois, one in each state police district. Currently, there are 16 operators running those 21 licenses. As of for this year, there's an additional 75 stores that are getting applied for within the state. And this is also connected to craft growers, processors, transportation. So within this year, there's going to be a lot of licenses awarded. And as these people win these licenses, they're going to be looking to make large investments, whether it's in Kane County, Kenlo County, Will County, DuPage County, millions of dollars of investments in areas, whether it's a store, a processing facility, an infusion facility, a craft grow. And this is a very high-tech, very, you know, capital-intensive industry that people are going to be putting so much money into and sophistication into and compliance into and security into. I mean, it's something that is not going anywhere, but the people that want to get involved will put this money to use somewhere within the state, whether it's Kane County or Cook or Will. I mean, obviously, the things that we do here will help drive some of that, decide some of that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions regarding Wabanci's program? And so everyone knows, if you'd like to take a look, we do know that Oakton Community College has such a program, and that program has been around now for approximately one year. Same kind of certificate program, but theirs is a different type of program. And Illinois Valley Community College has also an agreement, and they are doing the cultivation because Illinois Valley is a highly agricultural area, so that they focused on that. So this would be somewhat of a hybrid between the two, where it would really offer a great research in science and technology. And that's the specialization that Wabanci would like to do simply because they already have a very well-endowed lab that they'd like to make good use of. So they bring a unique aspect to their application. So that's, please feel free to take a look at Oakton's program as well as Illinois Valley if you're interested in educational programs for this growing job, this growing industry.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, Mr. Kiyos.
Kiyos? Yes, thank you. This question from Mr. Weber. I understand they have a really well-adapted lab. Are they turning out technicians now in other industries that are also certified? Or, yeah, that are also certified possibly in other industries for highly technical and specialized uses like cannabis?
Yes. They currently have this, yes, in other industries, yes.
So they have a well-founded background in turning out technicians that probably, a lot of the skills are transferable between the specialties, I'm guessing.
Yes, that's correct. And that's why they feel like they have a good shot of winning, be able to get the pilot program because of that lab and having a history with it.
I'm hearing no other questions. So with that, thank you, Mr. Weber. Mr. Van Kirkhoff, could you please present the permit and what we're looking at changing, potential changing that in unincorporated Kane County?
Sure. Good afternoon. I have a presentation that was given at Development Committee. I'm happy to go through briefly. And it also refers to a memo that was on the agenda of Development Committee. Happy to answer any questions on that. Before I start, though, I do just want to acknowledge and thank our State's Attorney's Office, especially from the Civil Division, Aaron Brady, who provided invaluable assistance when we went through this process back in 2019 in drafting ordinances and revising our zoning ordinance, and has been a big help in the last 90 days in bringing forth this ordinance to rescind an assisting staff with potential changes that are applicable. So next slide, please. So back in 2019, the county board at the time had the decision of whether, as all did all municipalities and counties in the state of Illinois, with the basic question, do we allow adult-use cannabis businesses in the unincorporated area or not? And the choice made at that point was no, or opt out for now. And that also led that the zoning ordinance needed to be amended to reflect that. So ordinance 19415 was passed and then adopted on November 12th, 2019. And then subsequently, the zoning board and the county board approved those zoning ordinance amendments. Next slide, please. So the proposed new ordinance, that's before you next month, at the next meeting, is one that would rescind that ordinance. And then by rescinding it, would then allow adult-use cannabis businesses in the unincorporated area. The ordinance reflects that after it's adopted, it'd be effective 90 days later. That would give time for zoning text amendments to go through the required public hearing process and recommendation by your zoning board, and then back to the full board so that those would have some time to coincide. And the State Act for Adult-Use Cannabis Businesses does allow local governments to enact reasonable zoning restrictions for all of the types of businesses. Next slide, please. So you're probably familiar with these. These are the different types of businesses that are defined under the State Act and subsequently would be defined in our zoning ordinance. I won't dwell on these unless anybody has any questions about one particular kind or not.
I do have a question, please.
Sure.
Just for clarification. When we talk about adult-use cannabis business establishment, that is retail?
Actually, the way they define it is that's sort of the umbrella definition for all the ones that are underneath that. So business establishment could be a craft grower, cultivation center, dispensing organization, any of those. So that's sort of the umbrella definition. And then the other ones are specific businesses under that.
So then the dispensing organization is the retail establishment?
That's correct, yes.
And the others are a business-to-business program? Business-to-business industry?
Mostly business-to-business. The only difference is the craft grower has some latitude to also have due infusing and dispensing. This is a little bit more latitude, kind of like a craft brewery concept is the way I understand it.
And could you share with me what infuser organization means? An infuser of what? Brownie, a piece of candy?
Yeah, that's my understanding. That's the processing that would actually take the marijuana product and infuse it into some other form, like a brownie or a gummy or other product.
Okay. Thank you. I do know that, I think it's Miller Beer or Budweiser in Canada is now taking a look, and I believe it's legal. and I believe it's legal in Canada, for beer that's infused with THC, so.
Madam Chair, Serge, sir?
Yes, Mr. Serge.
Mark, is, is, are any of, maybe there's another slide, I shouldn't be asking this yet, but which of these subcategories is specific to Wabanci?
That's a good question. I don't know, and I think Erin is on the line, maybe she knows or could look into it, but I'm not aware of anything in these definitions that really addresses a institution providing classes for those degree certificates. So I, I don't really know how this intersects with a educational facility.
Because I, I am, during this conversation, and again, this may have gone through another committee, but this is the first I'm hearing of this, you know, earlier today and last night while I was prepping, and in that, I'm drawing the correlation that the, the Wabanci information that Mr. Weber just gave out draws a distinct correlation to we need to overturn or reconsider, you know, this motion. And if that's not the case, because it doesn't fit into one of these categories, I'm, I'm, I just need clarification whether those are separate and distinct, or one is dependent on the other.
I don't know the answer to that. Perhaps Erin does, or perhaps we could look into it for you.
Thanks so much.
Madam Chair, Gumps?
Yes, yes, Ms. Gumps.
As I understand it, reading through it, I, I believe the, what's before us is for businesses and education facilities are not considered businesses as, as I understand that.
So do we need to do anything to allow Wabanci to do this?
No, not at all.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I, I thought it was dependent one A to B.
I, I think what my understanding, as Mr. Serge just alluded to, is that if we have an educated workforce who has this certificate program, businesses taking, looking to develop their, their business using an educated workforce, Wabanci's students may feed into that potential business. Does that make sense?
I understand the argument, yes.
Madam Chair, Strathman here?
Yes, Ms. Strathman. Hold on just a second, Ms. Strathman, hold on.
Fra speaking. I, I think if I'm listening right, I, I had the same question that Barb, well Nikki had once she brought it up, and I think that's what Cliff's alluding to, which is if, if this were not to pass at the county board and the unincorporated areas were not allowed to do these things, how could, how could Wabanci have a lab environment where I assume they're gonna have marijuana either growing or being processed or shown how to process? I mean, I, I just think that it'd be a shame for Wabanci to get this, this program granted to them, then find out that there's a loophole. So just something, and we don't need to answer it today, but I, I agree with the comments that it's something that should be answered.
And could you just clarify the loophole?
Well, for, for example, Wabanci is an educational facility in unincorporated Kane County, and we're gonna be voting to whether or not allow or disallow all those different cannabis-related uses in Kane County. So I know it's not mentioned specifically education up there, but they are going to be doing a lot of those things there to teach people how to do it. So I, I'm just saying it'd be a shame for them to receive this program and then find out that somebody could challenge it.
But Drew Serge is here, that's specifically what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's, I'm agreeing.
Do something, or we don't, they're already allowed to do it.
Yeah, I agree with you.
But we, just, to my understanding, the municipalities within Kane County have this jurisdiction to be able to develop any of these businesses if they so choose. So are the students who would be graduating from Wabanci are not limited to unincorporated Kane County? They can, they can develop a business in, potential should be hired for their skills in a municipality as well.
But that's afterward. The first fundamental question is, can you have a, a marijuana-based training program in the unincorporated areas unless you rescind the ordinance, which I think is Mr. Serge's question?
That is correct.
That is the question? All right. And we will make sure that that is answered.
I, this is John Martin. Looking at the whole situation, at least in my mind, a little more practically, you know, Wabanci is a very well-respected educational institute within the county. I don't think there's many people in this room who evidently in some manner had some contact with them over the years, and I, I guess to, just to be, the flow of it is that if in fact the whole world is involved, and, and the whole world is involved in, in our geographic area, in the man, in the manufacturer, in the sale, and what have you, I would hate to do anything at this level to preclude a valid educational program from Wabanci, and don't even ask the question as to whether it's a risk. If, if, if there's a possibility that it is, then I think it's another reason why this, this matter ought to be considered seriously because, again, Wabanci is not fly-by-night, Wabanci's program is not fly-by-night. The jobs that are available, should this program be successful, would have economic validity and, and benefit to the county. So I, I think we can parse the question and ask it, but my, my thought is, let's not run the risk. Let's just, let's just move it ahead and let Wabanci do what Wabanci's gonna do and, and in all likelihood, do well, because that's Wabanci's record within the county.
Madam Chair, Strathman here?
Yes, Ms. Strathman.
Do you know if Wabanci College is asking for our support in their application process?
Yes.
No, it was not, it was not presented that way. They just brought it up as, they, it was brought up via the jobs committee as something that could benefit the county. The program is not connected, to answer Cliff's question, the program is not connected to whether or not we, we approve the adult use in the county. It's, it's a totally separate thing, and the program that Wabanci is going after is via the state of Illinois that would be approving the pilot program. So anything related to municipalities or towns has nothing to do with Wabanci Valley and the state of Illinois. The state of Illinois and the cannabis world usurps any municipality and, and towns.
Yes, thank you. My, my question is, will it help them with their application process if we offer them this support?
I would say that it won't hurt them.
Okay, thank you.
And State's Attorney Brady is on the line. Ms. Brady?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. One, one item I'd like to point out is that what's up to the county is the ability to regulate the zoning aspect of these sales and business establishments. The state is in charge of all of the licensure, and so any program that would require some sort of licensure process would be approved and run through the state, and that really wouldn't be the county's involvement.
So the question is on the, on the table, I believe, is can, since currently the unincorporated Kane County prohibits any cannabis-related industry, is the educational institution of Wabanci exempt from that restriction?
So the way, I've only learned about this program through this presentation this afternoon.
So you will get back to us.
Did we lose her?
I think we lost her. Yes, Mr. Fra.
Fra speaking. No, so I, I, again, Cliff brought this up, Barb brought it up, and I, I agree with them, and we don't have to answer it today, but it's something maybe staff could look into. Again, a potential scenario, if this board votes no, and then Wabanci gets the program and starts it, there's nothing to preclude a neighbor of Wabanci to file some kind of a, a legal action that they're, they're doing some of these processes as part of their training in a, in a area that's unincorporated. So just something we should be aware of.
Thank you for that, and we'll get that clarification, and I, and I hope that the Wabanci's attorneys have also looked into that, but.
Agreed.
I'm sure that our attorney will be reaching out to their attorneys as well. Yes, Mr. Sheprow?
Yeah, I, I mean, listening to some of the discussion, I think Mr. Martin's comments may be correct as a practical matter, but I, I don't think the discussion today is whether Wabanci is not an outstanding institution or capable of handling a program like this. I think, as Mr. Fra said, it's just at this point, simply a simple question, are they exempt from, because they're state licensure, but as I understand it, all of the licenses for any business are not the result of a county license. So I think the, the fairly straightforward question at this point is simply, are they exempt? And if not, their ability presumably would depend on not approval of their license, but approval of the ability to have these activities in the unincorporated area.
I can tell you one thing, so for the past four years, the dispensary that's in St. Charles, as well as the one that's in North Aurora, those dispensaries were put there without town, the medical dispensaries were put there without any Kane, any county approval or city approval. The state allowed that to go in there. The state has more say-so in this than, than, than we do.
Well, the, the medical dispensaries were the result of a separate piece of legislation, but you are correct with respect to those.
Yes.
I, I suggest that we pass on this and let the State's Attorney examine it. You know, I, and I appreciate, by the way, the, the presentation, because I think it's worthwhile to know what sort of career opportunities there are.
Madam Chair, Serge, again?
Yes, Mr. Serge.
Just, I just want to, you know, this is such a conflicting subject for me, and I just want to make sure that I'm, that I'm, you, that, that my brethren here are helping me process this appropriately. My, my original vote on this, when this first came up, was a no vote, but a large piece of that was based on can, could, can, will the sheriff be able to support in the unincorporated areas? And at that time, the, you know, we were led to believe that we just don't have enough data, so let's not err on this, you know, let's err on the side of caution on that. I think that we do have enough data now, and, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but, but I think the, if you ask the sheriff, he would say, we haven't, you know, whatever the worst-case scenario was, we didn't go in that direction in any way, shape, or form. So maybe it's time to rethink, for me personally, rethink if that was the argument that I had to vote against it. On the other hand, what you're asking me to do is vote against those past board members who felt very strongly about this and overturn their actions, and, you know, and, and I find that to be a very difficult, you know, not unsurmountable, but a different, a difficult thing to do in, in one day. And again, I just received this, you know, last night I read it, I did have a constituent reach out to me, I did reach out to Jared and Ron Hain earlier this afternoon. So I've tried to come up to speed, but those are the conflicts that I'm having in my mind, and, and that has absolutely, and I want to be clear on this, absolutely nothing to do with Wabanci. What a great institution, although I'm from ECC, but you're either a Cubs fan or a Sox fan, I get it, but I don't want this to be confused. Nothing against Wabanci whatsoever, but those are the, those are the conflicts that I'm having, that I'm trying to balance, justify, go on in my head, and I'd surely like to have some more conversation on this, just to help calibrate myself. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Yes, Ms. Bates?
I think, I sort of wish these A and B were in different order on our agenda, not that it would really make a difference, but I think if we want to support Wabanci and support this program that they are trying to get accredited, that we are going to find that we should rescind 19415 and permit cannabis in the unincorporated areas of Kane County to support them in this and to make life much easier for Wabanci to put on these programs. And I don't think, I feel like we are overturning what the former board decided, we just have more data. So sometimes a decision that you make is not the decision, it's why you made the decision. We made the decision because Sheriff Hain had some reservations. Now he's changed, I, I think he's changed his mind on this because we have new data, more data. I don't think we're gonna be rescinding what the old board said, we're adding to what they said.
Madam Chairman, a point of order. I think we were in mid-presentation from Mr. Van Kirkhoff, and we are getting into a discussion that I thought might be more appropriate at the end of our presentation.
Sorry, Mark. Sorry.
No, 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 that's just, I can see us wandering off into.
Into the weeds?
The weeds. No, no pun intended, Mr. Kenyon.
Go to stake.
Lovely, lovely, lovely comment. Please continue, Mr. Van Kirkhoff.
Sure, thank you. Next slide, please. So somebody may have seen the memo that was in the Development Committee agenda, so I'll just mention that for reference. Some of the, if the ordinance were to be rescinded, these are steps that, that staff would take along with the Development Committee and the Zoning Board of Appeals and the State's Attorney's Office. But we would just review and confirm all of our definitions for the businesses in case anything's changed on the state level. We would review and amend other definitions just to distinguish the businesses from other definitions we already have in agricultural processing and retail uses such as pharmacies. We would also, staff is recommending that the various types of businesses would be added as special uses in the most appropriate zoning districts that are in the ordinance. Next slide, please. So this is just a chart. You see a list of the types of cannabis businesses on the left. On the top, there are various zoning districts, and the X signifies that the corresponding business in that district would be listed or could be listed with the ordinance amendments as a special use. Couple advantages of the special use process is it does give the, the, the community the benefit of notice and public hearing. It gives the county board the opportunity to review the location and make sure that it's suitable, as well as the opportunity to place conditions or, or other restrictions on the special use to make sure it's a successful and, and good operation. We have many types of businesses in our zoning ordinance that are listed as special uses just for that extra level of involvement by the county board, and that's staff's recommendation at this time. Next slide, please. Some of the other approaches to incorporate into the ordinance amendments, if they're permitted, would be to follow state-adapted setbacks from the property line of pre-existing schools or residential care facilities or other sensitive land uses. Consider adding hours of operations to follow some of the state statutes and guidelines. Consider limiting the number of cannabis businesses that the county would permit, kind of like what you do with the liquor licenses. We don't do the licenses for the cannabis businesses, but you could consider limiting the number that you want to approve in the unincorporated area. Next slide, please. This is just some setbacks. Our good staff researched the ordinances of our neighboring counties, just to give you an idea of, of what those setbacks are adapted by other counties for reference. Next slide, please. And then in terms of what the other color counties have done, it's just a list of the other ones in terms of whether they allow or prohibit them in the unincorporated area. DuPage is currently the only one besides Kane that prohibits them. Lake County did a one-year prohibition, and they're probably, as we speak, in the process of doing the same thing you are. Next slide, please. So the new ordinance would rescind that. If rescinded, we'd need to go through the ordinance for, for amendments to the zoning ordinance. Development Committee. to the zoning ordinance. Development Committee had this on their agenda, and they made a motion to forward this on to the full board for your use. I'm happy to answer any questions or otherwise you can continue on with your discussion.
Yes, Mr. Shepper?
I brought this up at the January meeting. I remain baffled why we are rescinding the ordinance.
Mike, please. Mike, please.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I remain puzzled as to why we rescind an ordinance and ask people to vote to rescind it, and we don't know what the replacement will look like. I've been doing zoning work for, gosh, I don't know, forty-odd years, and I've never been involved in a zoning situation where an ordinance was rescinded before there was a replacement. Normally, the process is, and I don't know why we wouldn't do it this way, is you would have a proposed ordinance, you would go out for public hearing, and the purpose of the public hearing is to take public comment on whether the proposed ordinance should amend or replace the existing ordinance. And then it comes up with a recommendation through our process, and the board then votes to either adopt the amendment or to remain, have the existing ordinance remain in place. And I don't understand why we would be doing this, in my mind, backwards and asking people to vote to rescind an action without knowing what the replacement is going to be. And a minor question as part of that, can we limit the number of licenses? Isn't the state the issuer of the license? I can see that we could enact restrictions on where they could be, but could we actually say no more than one or two establishments? Maybe that's really a question for the state's attorney. But I remain puzzled as to why we seem to be doing this in reverse order.
As to the, my recollection is that the state guidance that was out in the fall of 2019 suggested that having a number, limiting the number that would be allowed in a community would be considered a reasonable zoning restriction. My understanding was a particular geared towards smaller communities that maybe wouldn't want more than one in their community. So Erin can jump in as well. The reason for the approach that you see here, partially from staff standpoint, is like to suggest that some indication from the county board is to whether it was going to be rescinded or not before putting the zoning board and the public through an ordinance review process would be helpful to know if it was the intent of the board to allow the businesses. It certainly could be done the way you're suggesting, if the board would like to do that. From your request in January, that's why staff put forth a draft of potential, a preliminary draft that could go through that process. But you're right, it's not a, and it's not been heard by the zoning board.
Could not the board pass a resolution asking for a draft amendment to be submitted for public hearing? And that would be perhaps the indication that you're looking for if you believe you need some further expression of the board's interest in proceeding with the process. And I would say, from the discussion we've had now over three different meetings, I think it's pretty clear that there is substantial interest in changing the existing ordinance. So it puzzles me that you're, the department is still saying, we don't know what the board wants to do. But I guess, again, I just think logically, and, you know, some will say, well, what difference does it make? It's going to pass anyway. I just feel that it's, it's a bad precedent to do it that way. As I say, I've never heard of it done that way. The 90 days is always done in the context of if you're, let's say, passing an ordinance to propose to limit the number of drive-in banks. So you pass a moratorium on new applications for the drive-ins for 90 days, which is about the most the law will allow. And during that time, people can't rush in and apply for that before you change the ordinance. But then at the end of 90 days, you now either change it or you don't. The public is on notice of what their rights are, and you're not worried about the people trying to beat the clock. But to leave the property effectively unzoned for a 90-day period just strikes me as, as bad zoning and bad policy. Thank you. I'm sorry to go on at length.
Thank you, Mr. Shepper, for your thoughts. State's Attorney Brady is online. Ms. Brady?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. Van Kirkoof's assessment. There is guidance that suggests that a number-limiting establishments is permissible. It just has to be reasonable. But as to the procedural point, that mechanism was something I had drafted to kind of clean up the unique way that this law was passed. It went into effect, it was signed, I believe, in June of 2019 with a start date of January 1st, 2020. And there was a very unique procedure in that law that said counties have this much time to explicitly opt out by ordinance, otherwise they're automatically deemed to have allowed the business establishments. And so we had to draft that opt-out ordinance, you know, very specifically to make that clear that the county was opting out at that time. So, you know, as I, as I mentioned at the January development meeting, it's merely a housekeeping procedural mechanism. There certainly are other ways to do it, but that was the reasoning behind it.
So to clarify, if this ordinance is rescinded, then we have basically opted in?
Well, the last draft had it effective 90 days from the date of passage. So if there was some intervening desire to no longer opt in, you could certainly pass another one opting out. You could also, you know, as Mr. Shepper suggested, you know, have some other ordinance or mechanism in place to direct the ZBA to develop a zoning ordinance. Now, you know, it's a, it's a long process, and I think the ZBA probably would appreciate some more concrete board direction before they went through that. But, you know, as I say, there are multiple ways to do it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this, on this issue? Hearing none, none online? You may continue, or are you, is the presentation complete?
I'm available for questions, otherwise the presentation is complete.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirkoof. Are there any other questions to Mr. Van Kirkoof?
Madam Chairman, this is Deborah Allen.
Yes, Ms. Allen.
I just wanted to toss in, many of the people who have spoken today are relatively new board members, though I know everybody in preparation for this job was paying attention to what was going on before they actually took their seats. But I just wanted to remind, or at least recollect for myself, we did opt out, but I remember the conversation being that we didn't want to invent the wheel. We wanted to let other people invent the wheel, and then we would reconsider after a year based on how it had worked. And so I think that's a reasonable reason to have, reasonable reason, I think that's a reason to have this coming back before us, because we've had a chance to see how it worked in our communities, and reconsider whether we want to encourage these businesses in our, in the unincorporated parts of the county. And I think one of the driving forces here is it helps to have Wabanci saying, we think that there's a market, and we want to educate people to be able to take these jobs. But we also think of ourselves as such an agriculturally-oriented county, that it just makes sense in many ways that we would look at this as another industry that is joined at the hip with agriculture. I am remembering a Channel 11 program that talked about hydroponics. And I remember the people who were giving this program were saying that they stole as much as they could from the people who had learned to grow cannabis because they had learned which, which wavelengths were most conducive to growing product and how they worked and, and under what circumstances. So in some ways, this industry has paved some ground that other agriculture industries are happy to use. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Fraz?
Mark, I don't know if you would know this or not. I'm just curious for my own sake, especially representing a rural district, but is almost all of the cultivation indoors? Or is there a scenario where you would have 20 acres of cannabis growing somewhere outside?
My understanding is for the adult-use cannabis-growing business, that would be indoors.
Okay, thank you.
Please continue. Yes, Mr. Shepper?
I just want to say again, I am in no way suggesting that we shouldn't reconsider it. You always want to reconsider any legislation in light of facts that have changed. And I think Mr. Sergeis' comment about the sheriff might say, I think the sheriff did say publicly at Development Committee and possibly elsewhere, that he no longer opposed it because of the experience we had. My objection is solely to the order and the way it's done. And if somebody says, well, really, why are you wasting our time over that? I guess I would say, I just think that we ought to do it in the right way, and that adds to the credibility of the action we take. But, you know, I, today is maybe not the day to debate the merits of it. I think, you know, that, that will come, and hopefully by that point, we'll have a potential resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Van Kirkoof. Appreciate your comments. And it is of no intention, I know Mr. Ichbal brought this to, to your attention for your consideration, to show any disrespect for past board members. No disrespect is meant, and it is not warranted. Decisions were made through thoughtful consideration, but in the light of new information and new consideration and a growing industry, Mr. Ichbal thought it best to bring this forward. And I, and what I'm about to say, I'm not being sarcastic, so please don't take it sarcastic, but as being such. But oftentimes, legislation is changed because of new information and new input. Last year, we celebrated the 100th anniversary of women's right to vote, and for a very long time, women were not allowed to vote. And then 100 years later, in 1920, that decision was hard-fought and hard-won. And so that first decision was rescinded. We have a history throughout both federal, state, and counties, changing their minds, given new insights and new information. So it is not the intent to insult anybody or question why they made that decision. It's just a new decision is being brought forward to you for your consideration.
If I could just make one point, relative to Deborah Allen's comment, I have the same recollection she did. We did this because we were basically whistling in the dark. There was a lot of consideration given to wanting to know what the rest of the world was going to do. We clearly had an opinion from the sheriff that he wanted a year to find out what was going on. The sheriff has clearly withdrawn his objection to that. That was represented at the Development Committee meeting. So I don't, I don't feel we carry for a moral obligation to stick with the decision that was made for all the reasons that, that we've, we've talked about here. We didn't, we didn't announce this is a transient decision. But the bottom line is, there were a lot of trench and considerations in at least my thought process as we voted on this the first time, so.
Thank you. Can we turn the lights on? It's getting, twilight is coming here. Went from bright sunshine to twilight. Yes, Ms. Winnick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick comment relative to what Commissioner Martin just mentioned. We have to remember that where most of the cannabis has been legalized is in unincorporated areas that have their own police department. Now, we do have to think about if it's legalized in the unincorporated areas, now it's the responsibility, of course, of our own King County Sheriff, because places like Lily Lake, Plato Center, I'm not sure about Maple Park, but a lot of them do not have their own police departments. So I just wanted to add that. It is something to be concerned about.
And from what I have heard, these businesses are highly secured, and many of them have their own, their own private guards who are watching over very cautiously. And I have not heard, although I will be corrected, please, of any break-in on any grow centers. So what we're talking about is a highly regulated, highly protected industry for both employees and outside customers. And they're, they're subtle. They're not, they don't have a big cannabis grow, is grown here, science say. They will, they will blend in very well to the community. And they are, as far as any financial transaction, it is very well-guarded, very well-secreted, very well-managed. So that, that's what I do know from talking to Zen Leaf in St. Charles about that. So if there's no other comments, can we please bring up our state's attorney? And I've asked her for some information regarding her request and need for additional staff. And, thank you.
Mike, please.
Okay, I'm going to try and keep this short because it's a long day for all of you, and I have to pick up three 11-year-old boys at 5:30. So with that being said, next slide. So the next three slides or four slides is all the different state's attorney's duties. Everybody, obviously, is very aware of the Criminal Division that we have. This county board is more than aware of the great work the civil attorneys do in our office, because there's a lot more that you're going to learn about within this presentation. Next slide. Next slide. And the next one. And one more. And, thank you. He had the benefit of my other one. We maintain several different courthouses. We obviously have the Third Street Courthouse, which houses our Civil Division, where we do a majority of our cases. We obviously go down to the city to do federal court whenever we have certain employment cases. And we also have our Abuse and Neglect Division, along with the courtroom that hears those abuse and neglect cases. Over by the, by our main courthouse, we also have our Juvenile Justice Center. In the Juvenile Justice Center, that's where we hear all of our juvenile cases. There's a reason why that building is separate from all of our other buildings. It's because we need to keep the cases that involve juveniles separate from our criminal cases, because they are afforded certain rights as a result of their age, because we don't want that information necessarily to get out. We also have three branch courts, one in Elgin, one in Kane County, and one in Aurora. Just as a point of reference, when I first started here as an Assistant State's Attorney, all of our traffic and misdemeanor cases, which are held at our branch courts, were actually held in our main building in our courtroom 201. So since I was here 16 years ago, we have expanded significantly in terms of where the attorneys have to be, the types of cases, and how many cases we have in total. Next slide. At the Judicial Center, that's where you're going to see a significant amount of our criminal cases. In the branch courts, we do have our misdemeanor cases, as well as our traffic offenses, with the exception of our DUI cases and our domestic violence cases. We have a courtroom, a misdemeanor courtroom specifically assigned for domestic violence cases, and another one specifically assigned for DUI cases. We then have five felony courtrooms that were, will hear felony cases from possession cases all the way up to homicide cases. In terms of the management for the state's attorney's office, we have myself, the First Assistant Christine Baer. We have the Chief of the Criminal Division, who is actually starting on March 1st. And the ability for us to have a Chief of Criminal Division, which used to be a spot that we had, was provided by Sheriff Ron Hain, who was able to share a portion of his budget with us. We have the Deputy Chief of the Criminal Division, who is a current Assistant State's Attorney in our office, as well as our Policy Director, who's the chief of our post-conviction petitions. This position, the post of chief, Chief of Post Conviction, was actually created under Joe McMahon. It has had some really fundamental changes in our office, because we put a lot of focus on pre-trial cases, but what happens after the conviction has been obtained. When there's When there's challenges to the sufficiency of the evidence, to how the investigation or the prosecution happened, those are cases that we need to pay attention to because we want to make sure, no matter what, that justice is being done. In addition to that, in our felony courtrooms, you're going to see our drug cases. We have a specific drug unit. We have a child support unit that is on the first floor of the Judicial Center that has helped to obtain millions of dollars for families within King County. We also house our advocates, our investigators and our specialty courts and our VOPS. Specialty courts are the Drug Court, Drug Rehabilitative Court, Mental Health Court and Veterans Court. And VOPS is Violation of Probation Cases. So if a person is put on probation and does not follow one of the court orders, we do follow up with that because that's the best way for us to ensure safety and compliance. Next slide. So the reason that I'm coming at my almost three-month tenure as the King County State's Attorney to ask for ultimately what adds up to $3.4 million, not the 2.7 I said at JPS, is because we have seen that there are certain crimes that are increasing. Some of this, we can say, is just statistically how it happens. And a lot of it is actually related to what happened with COVID. In addition to that, what we have seen is that the workload for these cases has continued to increase because technology has only gotten better. When, again, I was here at the State's Attorney's Office, we had squad videos at almost every police department, but not a lot of body cameras. We also would get occasionally surveillance videos, but not to the extent that we have it now. Because everyone can afford something like a Ring device or a Nest, we're getting a lot more of those videos when we're looking at the cases. And we're getting the squad videos and we're getting the body cam footage. And as we know, when the governor signed in the House bill yesterday, every department is going to have to have body camera footage. That has increased our workload exponentially because it is the ethical duty of the prosecutor to review all of the evidence in the case. We can't just turn it over. Because if there's something exculpatory in there, something that tends to show that the defendant did not commit the crime, it's our duty to discover that and look at the case as to what that means. In addition to that, we frankly need to focus on prosecuting cases in a different way. We need to focus on people with addiction issues, mental health issues, lack of resources. And frankly, as I said in my presentation before, just some people who make really stupid decisions. And we need to divert them out of the criminal justice system, get them to where they need to be to go down a different path. And that is going to take a different way of prosecuting, a different way of looking at this and new partnerships with our police departments. And lastly, we need to increase our salaries to be competitive. You're going to see a slide in here that shows that King County has consistently not been competitive. And I know that State's Attorney McMahon would come to the board and would discuss this issue about how our salaries allowed other people to go to DuPage County or other surrounding counties because they frankly just paid more. Next slide. So what follows is seven resolutions that I'll explain throughout all this as to what we're looking for. What we're ultimately going to do is come and piecemeal with this as we find out where the funding can come from. Understanding that asking for $3.4 million, especially during a pandemic, is a very big ask. We're going to do this in a reasonable way by working with the board, by working with finance, to actually find a way to do this that doesn't negatively affect the county. Next slide. So to start off with the first resolution in terms of salary increases. If you take a look at Lake and Will County, Lake and Will County are closest to the population of our county. We obviously are still waiting for the results of the census, but the communication that I've heard so far is that they believe that we're closer to 600,000 as opposed to the 530 of what we were last year. As a result of that, if we look at Lake and Will County, you're going to see a significant difference in the pay for the attorneys as well as support staff that we have. I really want to highlight the support staff. We have some fantastic support staff who come in and do all of the work behind the scenes and don't necessarily go to court to get the credit that comes with doing a trial. And yet they do so for a starting salary of $29,000. In Lake and Will County, they're looking to start them at $38,000 or $40,000. And that's a significant increase, especially if you understand how much it costs to live in King County, to want to have a family in King County, to buy a house. And again, these are the individuals that frankly make the attorneys look good when the attorneys go to court. Next slide. So again, looking at this difference, you're going to see the marked difference between King County and these other two counties. And this is the reason why potentially we are losing really good employees. Next slide. So the problem is when you lose really good employees, you lose the fact that you have trained them, which means we have to bring somebody else in and spend the time to train those individuals. There's also that, just the frankly added stress to every employee who has to look and go through the cases that we have. These are horrific photographs sometimes of victims who are injured. The 911 calls are sometimes terrible just to listen to and even our support staff listens to that. So add the stress on to somebody who then has to just take a second job to be able to do the job here that they like. And this goes for attorneys and support staff. We do have attorneys who work two jobs, not only with us. We've had people who have tended bar, we have had people who've worked at family businesses. And that adds to the stress of what we have. Frankly, the high turnover rate is going to cause issues with consistency on cases. Next slide. So what we are asking for, and first and foremost, is for the non-attorneys, we want to increase their salary at least by $6,000. This still doesn't make us equivalent to others, but it is going to make a world of difference for the people who work for us. We would also like to increase the attorney salaries by 5% to again, make us more competitive. Because again, part of the way that we are able to value them, not only is the appreciation that we have, but in how we pay them so that they can have a good work-to-life home balance. Next slide. Our next resolution and the one that's most closely associated with COVID is a resolution to increase our domestic violence and our abuse and neglect divisions. In 2020, we saw a decline in all of our criminal cases, except for domestic violence and abuse and neglect. And this is a staggering number. If you look at how the felonies went up, the misdemeanors went up, and as much for the abuse and neglect of 85%. If we're down everywhere else, you have to wonder that these crimes where the people live in the homes with the abusers is so staggering and the reason why we really need to ensure that we have the personnel to help these individuals. Next slide. What we have found is that early intervention, an intervention where we're providing counseling, is the best way to stop these cycles in violence and really to protect the victims as well as children. We have to really focus on these cases begin, because again, this isn't a stranger case. This is something where they live in the home with the victim, so it's likely to be repeated. Because we were all stuck in our homes, there was no escape for the victims in these cases. So again, looking at abuse and neglect, from 2018 of 57 cases to 2020 of 204 cases, that is a huge amount. In domestic violence, again, you're seeing that steady increase when in other cases we're seeing a decrease overall. Next slide. Currently in our domestic violence unit, we have one supervising attorney and three felony attorneys. And you'll see their caseload. Again, these caseloads are significant because there's a lot of recorded footage on it, along with jail recordings. Jail recordings are when the defendant is in jail and has access to be able to call and somehow manipulates that system and calls the victim in the cases. Our attorneys are actively seeking that out because there's oftentimes many admissions and we have to be proactive in terms of protecting our victims. We also have one and a half advocates. And when I say one and a half, because half of the advocate's position goes to our deferred prosecution program. The proposal is that we add a felony attorney, add a misdemeanor attorney and add a full advocate and preferably somebody who's by. Next slide. In our Abuse and Neglect Division, we had two dedicated attorneys and no support staff or case managers. What we ended up having to do is to shift employees within the office because for a while, our Civil Division was actually loaning their attorneys to Abuse and Neglect just to be able to keep up with the caseload and protect victims. So we have already had to shift somebody over, but that again, makes a hole then in the division where we were able to move that person. We also did move over two of our current support staff to really deal with the voluminous amount of discovery that happens because of medical records, DCFS reports and other documents. So our proposal is to add the one supervising attorney and two dedicated support staff because those again, are cases that we need to give our focus to. Next slide. Our third resolution then is about a mental health unit. We currently do not have any dedicated attorneys to a mental health unit. Again, our Civil Division, which is going to, above and beyond, has allowed two of those civil attorneys to do kind of part-time work in the north end at Elgin Mental Health Center and the south end at AMITA. What they do is argue petitions for involuntary commitment, along with forced medication petitions. What we're finding out, because we aren't able to really dedicate people who can work with the doctors, make sure that the petitions are correct and go to proper hearings, it's that some of these hearings are lasting eight to nine hours long. I had a conversation today with a doctor who works at AMITA and this doctor was talking about the fact that one psychiatrist alone was under oath for eight hours total in terms of this, which is discouraging doctors frankly, from filing these petitions because they do have an actual job of being able to help the people. Having a dedicated mental health unit means that we are going to have people who are knowledgeable about the law, knowledgeable about how to admit evidence, knowledgeable about how to declare people as expert witnesses. So the proposal is to ask for two attorneys and one case manager support staff person to be at the north end and south end of our counties. Next slide. The next fourth, the fourth resolution is for a felony review unit. The way that felonies are charged currently in King County is that we have to, we have our attorneys who are in courtrooms already, who have their own cases. Every three months, they give a week of their time where they're on for 12 hours a day, Friday through Friday. And they receive these calls from the officers to authorize charges. What happens is that you have inconsistency in charging. When I've met with the police chiefs, that's what I've found is their biggest complaint is how we're able to run our felony unit now. Having three dedicated prosecutors whose sole job is to do the felony review unit means we get consistency in terms of charging. You do not have to worry about one person being on on this day versus another person being on this day. They will have policies, they will communicate with each other. We will be able to do what's right in the cases, which includes making sure that we're not charging cases that do not have enough evidence to go forward. Next slide. The fifth resolution is for the narcotics unit. Again, what we see is that the drug issue is not ending. Not only do we have to make sure that we're prosecuting these cases, especially when we're dealing with people who are dealing drugs, we also have to make sure that we're identifying those individuals who are users or who have addiction issues because we want to make sure to divert those individuals out. We do not want to put everybody in jail. We do not want to convict everybody, we want to protect our community. And for those with addictions, if we get to them sooner, we're able to really provide the treatment and help and keep them out of the system. For those who choose to make it their business to deal drugs, that's a different situation. And we need to make sure that we have experienced prosecutors to deal with that. So we're asking for one attorney to prosecute felony cases and a dedicated support staff to assist with those cases. Next slide. A secondary portion of our narcotics unit is our civil forfeitures. Our forfeitures come in when somebody is using either money or property to commit a crime. So in our drug cases, we often find people who have a significant amount of cash on them because that's the money they've collected as a result of dealing drugs. Again, our Civil Division has offered a person part-time to be able to do these forfeiture cases. And as a result of that, we were able to obtain $427,009.29 in seized assets. And that goes right back to the police departments and the State's Attorneys. We need a person who's dedicated full-time to these cases because there, there are a lot of them. We also have forfeitures that include cars. This is a means of stopping criminal behavior by taking what they use to commit the crimes away from them. So the proposal on this one is also to add an attorney to work full-time on the forfeiture cases. And frankly, my Civil Division will be happy to just actually deal with the civil cases that they're assigned to do. Next slide. The resolution for the Prosecution Integrity Unit, which is the sixth one, deals with what happens when somebody makes a claim after a case is over that something was wrong. Now, we currently have a post-conviction unit, but that post-conviction unit primarily deals with the fighting of these cases. The making sure that when it goes up to appeal, that all of the information is presented. In addition to that, it is the best practice of a prosecutor's office that we have to provide to them the ability to have an independent person whose review is solely to look at these cases. Now, I can tell you, our PCP unit currently has attorneys whose goal is to make sure that we're doing everything ethically right. But again, when you look at the best practices, the way to really ensure justice, it's to have this independent Prosecution Integrity Unit. That is a proposal for three attorneys, one investigator and one support staff in order to be able to staff this and staff it on an independent level so they're not reliant on the main office for any information or investigative work. Next slide. As a great example, when State's Attorney Joe McMahon was here, he was asked to look into a 2000 Aurora murder, that there was a conviction and even that conviction was upheld on appeal. New information came out that tended to show that the information that was provided in trial was not correct. He took it upon himself, along with individuals in our office, to do the due diligence to make sure that we had justice in this case. And justice in the case was having this conviction vacated. And so as it was put up here, and one of the things I learned from Joe McMahon is that we are charged with the duty of seeking justice, not just seeking convictions. Next slide. My very last slide, I promise, is the Community Prosecution Based Programs. The first one is for a Community Prosecution Unit. And this is to have case managers in the north end, south end and the tri-cities. These are individuals who are going to organize people who live in our community and are prosecutors to get out and provide information as to what the State's Attorney's Office does. If there's a criminal trend that's happening, if there's issues, but also to be responsive to the needs of our community, which means if something is going on in a neighborhood, we should be proactive and not just reactive. We should be there with the community, with our organizations, making sure we're doing the best we possibly can. We had a fantastic Community Prosecution Unit way before I even started. And the last known Community Prosecutor was Mayor Richard Irvin of Aurora. And we saw a lot of great work as a result of that Community Prosecution. And one of the original founders of our Community Prosecution is a wonderful woman by the name of Pam Bradley, who still works at our office. So we have that institutional knowledge to start this immediately. Next slide. In addition to that, what we want to do is to really step up our deferred prosecution. And what we have to do is we have to create something that's a pre-arrest diversion program. We are increasing our after-arrest deferred prosecution because that's the right thing to do. But it really matters for certain individuals that they're not put through the criminal justice system, especially those who have the addiction issues, mental health or lack of resources. As you know, a person is arrested, they're booked, their photograph is put everywhere. So if you do a Google search of somebody, you're going to find out they were arrested. You're never going to find out the results of what happened, that that person took accountability, that that person had an issue, that that person resolved it. And so they're forever tainted as a result of that. If we intervene quicker and we prevent them from having to go into that system, from having to spend a night in jail, yet get them access to treatment, get them access to resources, we are going to see statistically, we have less people going through a system. A program similar to this in Lead, Washington, that I've done a significant amount of research, found that 60% of people put in through the Lead Program versus the Control Program didn't commit any further crimes. They didn't go back into the criminal justice system. And think about that, if just 60 out of 100 people never come back to the criminal court system, we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. Next slide. Obviously, criminal justice reform is essential, we know we have to do it. And frankly, King County can be on the front end of that. We can be an example to every other county of how it's done right. We can decriminalize addiction and mental health issues. We can also focus on the fact that people have trauma and that that trauma surfaces at different times in their life. And sometimes it surfaces during the time that they're committing these criminal acts. It's essential that we actually focus on that and change the way that we look at prosecution to make sure that the people that can be rehabilitated are given that option. The people who make our community unsafe and we cannot change, they're the ones that go to jail and go to prison. Next slide. We're going to take a proactive approach. Doing so remains, we are going to reduce costs everywhere, not only for law enforcement, but we're also going to see that in the medical community. People who get to treatment quicker are less likely to have overdoses or have suicide attempts because again, they're getting that access to treatment. We're also frankly, going to be able to better identify the disproportionate treatment that we know exists in our law enforcement. in our law enforcement community. By being proactive in this way, we're going to be able to help those people who have been marginalized through the criminal justice system and get them the treatment that they deserve. And frankly, I want to be that bridge between the community and law enforcement. I want to show that our community and our law enforcement is all going to be working together for the betterment of this community. Next slide. So over the next month, you're going to hear a joint proposal from the judiciary, myself, and the public defender's office. We at the state's attorney's office are going to come just, are going to request some of the assistant states attorney positions just because the need is so great in regards to those, but only after we've done a thorough review of the finances to see where that money could come from, especially if it's something that's related to the CARES Act. We're also frankly applying for grants and looking for other money as a result of that, just so you know that we're not entirely dependent on the county. Some of these community-based programs, especially the pre-arrest diversion, would come with nominal fees, and those nominal fees would come back to support these programs. Next slide. So as much as I would love to offer any questions, I'm now officially late to pick up children, and DCFS does terrify me. So I think you all have my cell phone. I would be more than willing to talk to any of you as a result of that. So thank you, and I'm sorry. Although if Erin Brady's on, she can answer all the questions. She's off.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
I appreciate it. Thank you all. Sorry, I have to run.
Any comments on State's Attorney Mosser's presentation?
Chairman?
Yes.
All we need is money. All we need. I need and no money.
Weeds again.
Was Mr. Kenyon offering?
They can grow marijuana in the court in the judicial building. They love sunlight.
Madam Chairman?
Bates? Yes, Ms. Bates.
Well, State's Attorney Mosser did give many examples towards the end of how this would save a lot of money. So if we have to run some numbers on that, maybe that would be a necessity, and maybe that would help to prove that it would be a balance.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, good evening, Molina.
Yes, Ms. Molina.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chairman. As the chair of our JPS, I just wanted to invite everybody to continue listening to this conversation. We will be having presentations from our public defender at our March meeting and hopefully are able to do some kind of combined presentation with the rest of our judiciary partners to give you all more information on how this, the need is not just from our prosecutors, it's from pretty much every single department that the judiciary and public safety touch. So this is a really big, I guess, a big task for everyone, and there's going to be a big price tag attached to it. But I think together, we can work on creative solutions to make sure that we're providing the services our community needs. So thank you. That was my pitch for everybody to stay tuned to the next judicial and public safety meeting.
I have a question regarding the new legislation that was just signed by the governor and it's the body cameras specifically. Can you, through your committee, define what that would mean for King County? What the potential costs are going to be? I know that it's not just getting the body cameras, but to my understanding, it's also being able to store it, the film, being able to archive the film, index the film, and pull the film down. All those are related costs. So if we could just, not necessarily at the next meeting, but how that is to be launched and what the timeline is for incorporating that here for the county so we can start making some plans for next year's budget.
Madam Chair Gums? Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Shepper?
Yeah, I think Chairman Molina initiated that at one of the previous meetings. I seem to recall that virtually everybody reporting to that committee said that the legislation would affect them. And, but in many cases, some of the legislation doesn't kick in for a number of years. But the one thing that became clear to me is that it was not going to reduce any of our expenses.
Absolutely. No, there's a greater need.
Madam Chair Gums?
Yes, Ms. Gums.
As it pertains to funding of the body cameras and storage, having reached out to several legislators, there is going to be legislation. It could not be included in this bill as they're separate, but there is going to be funding appropriations in the budget process. So there will be money appropriated for the body cameras, but that has to be done through a different system, or a process, rather.
From a state that can't pay its bills.
And for King County, just to, I guess, if we want to stay on the body cam issue, I think we've already allotted funding for that, but there are a lot of other added costs to this particular piece of legislation. And like Mr. Shepper said, all of our judicial partners will be providing us with kind of what the cost is by their department to the county. And hopefully, we'll get those numbers soon.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? All right.
Madam Chairman Allen?
Yes, Ms. Allen.
Would it be possible for our new state's attorney to try and give us some data on state's attorneys who are going to other counties? I only ask in that we faced this before, before he was a judge, when he was the state's attorney, Judge Barsanti. I swear to you, did a drumbeat every meeting of every month for several years, saying that he was losing state's attorney's revolving door going to other counties. And our answer to that was, we did a, I think it was a $400,000 add to his budget one year, and then $400,000 a following year. And that enabled him to bring people up so that the revolving door was no longer revolving. And I'm just wondering if Ms. Mosser can bring us some statistics to back that up, that people are in fact being trained by us and then being hired away by other counties. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Molina, can you make sure that she gets that information?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Hearing no other?
If we're done, I would move we adjourn to get on the trail.
That trail is beckoning as the light is waning. We have, I see no need for executive session,